Margaret, I'm on a new laptop. Can you let me know if you can hear me? Can anybody hear me?
Yes, I'm sorry, I could hear you.
I can hear you, you sound good.
Okay, alright, good.
I can't unmute myself unless I click into the Zoom window.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Pursuant to Section 54956 of the California Government Code, a special meeting of the City Council is hereby called for June 1st, 2021 at 5:30 PM. And it does look like we have a quorum. So Margaret, could we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Councilmember Rary?
Here.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Bryant?
Here.
Okay, so all are present. At this time, we will open public comments, and I'll turn it to you, Margaret.
At this time, the public is permitted to address the City Council on items that are on the closed session agenda. Please save your comments for the business item for that part of the meeting when you'll have the opportunity to provide them. I received zero written public comments on this item that were submitted prior to the meeting. If you wish to speak under public comment, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature, and I'll call upon your name if provided and unmute you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after your timer has expired. While we encourage your comments, state law prevents the City Council from discussing items that are not on their meeting agenda, and if appropriate, staff will follow up on them. And I see no hands raised.
So at this time, then, we will close public comments, move into business items, receive a verbal update, and provide possible direction to staff regarding the holding of a Fourth of July parade. And Bruce Mulder will now present this item. Bruce?
All right, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. So yes, I'd like to give an update on the Fourth of July parade. So after June 15th, parades will now be allowed under both the county and state guidelines. With this in mind, staff is in the process of starting to bring back community events in a safe, responsible, and feasible manner. We are planning a modified parade that we think can be managed while emphasizing mask-wearing and capacity. Staff has been considering options for the past several months, and we think that we have a good plan that will allow the community to come together to celebrate the July 4th holiday. Measures taken to modify this year's parade and mitigate the crowds include the following. The children's parade and the festival at City Park have been removed from the event. Both of these events bring in more patrons, and without these, we anticipate smaller crowds. Based on the parade entries, we anticipate that the event should not last longer than one, two hours maximum. We will strongly emphasize the requirements to wear masks for attendance at the parade, and we are looking at options including pre-registration to sign up for placement along the parade route for viewing. Marketing materials for the event will outline expectations for safety and COVID guidelines. And the parade route itself is pretty long, and we will have three announcer tables set up along the route. This will encourage people to sit along the entire route instead of crowding on Oak Street. All parade entries will be kept much more than six feet apart, and it will be further than six feet from the audience. In addition, we will not be allowing parade entries to pass things to the audience, like throwing candy. We do have contingency plans in place, or in case there are surprise guidelines from either Contra Costa Health Services or the State Department of Health. And these include chocking and socially-distanced viewing areas on the sidewalk, requiring pre-registration to specific viewing areas, utilizing the viewing areas on a first-come, first-served basis. And if it turns out that any guidelines change between now and July 4th, we could also cancel the parade like we've had to do before for other holiday parades. Staff has also reached out to other cities in Contra Costa County to find out what other cities are doing. So our research shows that five cities, including Brettwood, are moving forward with events, including Antioch, Arinda, Pleasant Hill, and San Ramon. In addition, nine cities have canceled their events, and Concord is moving forward with a modified drive-in for the fireworks. It should be noted that other factors are included in the decision-making process to cancel events, including budget constraints and lack of time to put an event together, and staffing challenges with working an event over the holiday weekend. Staff is confident that we have a plan and appropriate, plan an appropriate safe event that meets state and county guidelines. However, we understand that the City Council and the public may have safety concerns with beginning to bring back community events at the appropriate time. We still have some time to put in additional safety measures, but we would like to hear from the council if the council has questions or concerns. That concludes my presentation, and myself and our recreation staff, Chris Pharoah and Stacy Dempsey are also here as they are involved in the planning process. So I might ask them to jump on the line as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Rary?
Yeah, I actually spoke with Theresa Garringer over at Supervisor Burgess's office, and Arinda actually has now canceled it according to their mayor. So they are not going to be doing it. Danville did cancel theirs. Let me get back to the other document. Oakley canceled their fireworks because they couldn't. Piedmont canceled their parade. Danville canceled their parade. Lafayette does not have one. Arinda canceled theirs. Pittsburgh canceled their fireworks. And while Antioch's doing it, they actually aren't doing it. Celebrate Antioch, an outside organization is putting it on, and they're still working through what the guidelines might be. I spoke with the mayor today. Pleasant Hill, they've done it. They're going to be doing it, but they take their parade to the residence, having a big band, and the elected officials in convertibles and a few other things, but not to have a big drawn-out parade. And they're going to be driving through neighborhoods. They're going to have a house decorating contest. They're doing a virtual 5K. And they're doing fireworks, but they're asking that people watch it from their homes. And Concord Pavilion, or Concord is having fireworks, and it is at the Concord Pavilion. And again, it is to be done from the people's cars. CDC also had guidelines for parades. And in looking at their guidelines for outdoor activities, you look at unvaccinated people to walk, run, bike outdoors with members of your household. They consider that safest. No mask whether you're vaccinated or not vaccinated. To attend a small outdoor gathering with fully vaccinated family and friends, again, without masks, it's safest either way. If you attend an outdoor gathering with fully vaccinated and unvaccinated people, the safest for the unvaccinated is without a mask. Safest is with a mask and without, for the vaccinated. Dine in an outdoor restaurant with friends from local households is less safe even with a mask for the unvaccinated, and safest with no mask for those who are vaccinated. Attend a crowded outdoor event like a live performance parade or sports event is least safe even with a mask for the unvaccinated, and safest without a mask for those who are vaccinated. My concern is that we're just getting out of this. I mean, I don't understand why we can't wait an entire year to let us get through this. We're going to have two more parades this year if it all goes right. We've got homecoming coming up, and we've got the holiday parade. So we do have two parades where the community can come out. Just give us some time to really get over this, to get more people vaccinated, and really make sure that we're not going to shut our communities down again and close down businesses in our town who are finally able to open with capacity. And I hate to think that we would cause a spike in the numbers because we've jumped into this too fast. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Meyer?
Thank you. A lot of mixed feelings about this one. I can acknowledge, I know that people need a reason to come together and feel good and positive about something, but of course, I'm quite scared about the potential of... Bruce, you mentioned additional safety measures that we could put in place. And I'd like to hear a little bit more about that. But I also want to say, I think Brettwood has historically been a mix of people who are following mask mandates and who are not, and who are following the social distancing and who are not. And I, you know, more power to whoever and however they believe. But I am nervous about our ability to force the masking and the social distancing. But I would like to hear what your thoughts are. I mean, in a perfect world, we'll be able to hold this. But I'm just not, I'm not convinced that it's safe to do so. So I want to hear what you have to say.
Sure. Yeah, so one thing we can do is we can identify different areas around the route and identify all the different curb areas and come up with sections so that we can actually pre-register people to attend the parade and put them on a identified section, and we can manage the capacity of every section along the route. So by doing that, then, we, by the registration process, we can, through that, let them know what the requirements are for masking. And then we can identify them to go to a certain place, and we can say that it's, pre-registration is required to attend the event. So that's a way that we can help manage the crowd and capacity, and so that there's only a certain amount of people that attend the event.
You mentioned these three stands. Are we considering, or maybe you already said this and I missed it, lengthening the route so that there's more space for people to spread out? Because I know that typically that loop is really crowded. I mean, I've gone to these parades before, of course, as I'm sure we all have. And I want to know, like, you're talking about these after-events potentially keeping things safer because people aren't going to attend if they can't do the kids' events and whatever. But what, in your head, how many people are we seeing at this? And how can you predict that, Lee?
So the parade route goes from Burt Street to downtown and then turns right on Oak and finishes just past the library. So that's the route. We would stretch the patrons out along the route by using this registration process and identifying where people need to go to attend the event. We'd have to look at the numbers and the capacity on how many people we could fit on the route based on that. We haven't done those calculations yet, but it could be per-section that, it could be 1,000 to 1,500 or so based on the capacity of each section. We still have to look at that. But that's a way that we can identify marks on the curb and identifying where people can go with their family and allowing them to have a spot identified on the route.
And what about extending the route to a longer distance so that there is even more space for spreading out?
Yeah, we could look at that. We could have the parade extend, you know, past the, you know, farther down the road past the library. So it's possible that we could even extend it even further. So we could take a look at that if needed.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Part of our job is health and public safety for our residents. What analytics did you use to derive that this was in the public's best interest when it came to their health?
Well, we basically looked at the guidelines that said that after June 15th, we could begin to open up. And based on the state and county guidelines, this was appropriate to bring something back. We've looked at what other cities are doing, but as far as any specific analytics, we haven't gone through that process.
When it comes to managing the crowd, I think that's going to be a challenge. You said that you're going to assign areas. What kind of headcount do you have of people that are going to go out and manage the crowd? Because I think it's going to take a lot of people. So how many people do you think from the city are going to go out and manage the crowd? And what safety precautions do you take for them? Seeing what we've seen on like airplanes and restaurants of people refusing to wear masks, how are you going to support staff if something were to happen and people don't want to move?
Sure. Well, we could assign people to all these different sections. So we'll use volunteers, and we'll use our staff that we have in recreation for events to help us. We'll also look to explorers, and the PD is also helping us to be available on the, you know, working the event as well. I can't give you a specific number right now. I do have Chris and Stacy who have been working to plan the event on the line that they might be able to give specific numbers for staffing.
Why, I guess one of my questions is, I like the idea of a reverse parade. We've heard that some cities are doing reverse parades where the residents drive in the car, and the floats are on the side. Why did we choose for a traditional parade that is less safe versus something like a reverse parade? What were the thoughts, what was the thought process behind that?
Sure. We did look and consider the reverse parade option. We also considered an option of using the high school football field for an event as well. And Stacy has looked at both of these options. So I see she's on the line. Can you help answer that question, Stacy?
Sure. Good evening. For the reverse parade, we did one for Hometown Halloween, and that was very successful. The problem with the reverse parades is the amount of time it takes for entrance to get through the parade route. So in the fall, when it wasn't as hot outside, having those parade or those booth locations out there and having volunteers there for four hours wasn't too bad. But in the summer, when it's really hot outside, even in the morning, having those floats or those performances, even for four hours, I think we only got 504 cars through. And so that's with no performances, just stop, open your window, and the booth handed out candy. So for a reverse parade, even to get the same number of participants would likely take twice as long to get through with those performances. So it is something we looked at. It just didn't seem as feasible given the heat.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I think we're, so I think based on what I heard from Councilmember Rary, we're one of the only cities doing a traditional parade, it sounds like, right?
Not every, in our research, what we found was not every city does a parade. So when we looked, some cities do fireworks, some cities do concerts. So it's kind of hit and miss to be able to get information that's really consistent with actual parades. But a lot of the events, when I talked to the staff that was working on planning them from other cities in the county, they put on events that are so much larger than ours. They had to make a decision before the Beyond the Blueprint document came out the week before last, I think on the 21st, that basically said the only requirements for events are going to be for mega events, which are over 10,000 people outdoors. So they had to make decisions prior to that when they're working with food vendors and bands and live performers, and they just had to make those cancellation decisions before the state came out with their Beyond the Blueprint document.
Yeah. I think once I heard that the concerts in the parks bring about 3,000 people to downtown, well, how many people do, I mean, with not a lot to do for Fourth of July, how many people do you think are going to show up?
I mean, it just depends. Like Bruce mentioned, we can do pre-registration. The parade route itself, we typically get way more people on Oak Street than we do going down First Street. So the idea is to really stretch it out and get people to move down towards the end. As far as the viewing areas go, if we do pre-registration, then we'll have a better idea of how many people are planning on coming, obviously. So we were looking at doing something similar to, if you've been to Disneyland or California Adventure, how they do World of Color where you get a pass, you're in the blue section. And then we have one person assigned to the blue section, there making sure people have their masks on. It's a requirement that we're enforcing in all of our community centers, at the pool, at the aquatics complex. So even though people aren't, as Councilmember Meyer said, wanting to wear their masks, we've had a pretty good track record in our facilities and in our program so far with people listening to the guidelines and understanding that in order to participate, they need to kind of go along with it. So, and those who don't want to tend to not come. So I'm hoping that that might affect the attendance a little bit. When I figured it out with the current parade route, if we have about 75 people per section, which is about a block, an entire street block, would be about 1,200 people total for the event. So if we do pre-registration, we would have a maximum. And you show up, you go to your designated seating area, there's staff there to check in, and those are the only people that can attend. So if that's the council's decision, or if that ends up being how strict the guidelines are for those events, we can do that. We can do it with no pre-registration, that it's first-come, first-served with the same capacity in those seating areas. That's an option, too. So we have the ability to limit the capacity, given the road closures and actually caution taping off the sections where people are going to sit.
Yeah, I think I'm leaning towards a reverse parade or just holding off. I just don't know how we can really do that. I mean, we know people are going to just show up downtown, but I don't want to go to the parade, but I want to go to the store. Like, it's just, it's going to be really tough, and I don't know how we're going to enforce that. But we can hear what everyone else has to say.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Bruce, I don't know if it's you or anyone else on staff that could answer. After June 15th, I know a lot of things, there's going to be some changes. Can you guys let us know what those changes are from the state, but also from the county's perspective? What are the differences?
Sure. Stacy's been following this really close. So Stacy, you want to jump in on that?
Sure. So the California Department of Public Health put out their Beyond the Blueprint document on, I think, May 21st. And so that basically says that all sectors of business are going to return to no restrictions with the exception of mega events. And those are indoor events over 5,000 people and outdoor events over 10,000 people. And so those are going to have the restrictions that we see currently regarding contact tracing and proof of vaccination or negative testing requirements. And so really, that's going to be the only guideline as far as events go. So in talking with the county, they've said that they're going to be consistent with what the state guidelines are. And so as we move forward planning for everything, it looks like the only thing that will be enforced will be the masking requirement. So the event would be outdoors. It doesn't sound like social distancing would be required if people have masks on. So that's why we can limit those seating areas and kind of control that a little bit ourselves. But as far as the guidelines go, those will be the only ones are for those outdoor events over 10,000 people, indoor events over 5,000.
So you're not, Stacy, you don't think that we'll hit capacity of 5,000 to 10,000 people?
No.
No? Okay. And how are you figuring that out? Is that from historical, from history, having events? Or is that just something you're pulling out of your head, kind of a thing?
No, just historically, we haven't hit that number. And obviously, if we do the seating areas and we limit that capacity, staff can have clickers. It's very normal for us to, at events, especially even at the community center for a regular event, have to control capacity just for fire codes. So it's not something that is abnormal for us at an event to need to control capacity in that way. So if we're setting the capacity limit, then we won't go over the capacity. And as far as, you know, people wanting to come in, we had that issue with Hometown Halloween with people wanting to access the storefronts while we were doing the event, and we had staff there. They were, you know, allowing the cars to go through, they were allowing pedestrians to come through. So it worked out really well in that sense. So I think as long as we have the, you know, the areas sectioned off, I feel confident that staff is able to control the capacity in those locations.
So as of now, you don't see anything that we would do would be a conflict between the state or county when it comes to after June 15th? So as of now, you don't see anything that we would do would be a conflict between the state or county when it comes after June 15th?
No.
Okay. And then my next question is, do you know what the data is in regards to people that have been vaccinated in our community? Would you know that or anybody in staff? Like what's the percentage, is it 50%, 60% of our community has been vaccinated or not?
50.6% have been vaccinated.
Fifty what?
50.6% as of today. Herd immunity is 70% is my understanding.
Okay. And then my next question, are we having any issues? And obviously, I wouldn't think so, but I just want to ask the question. I may already know the answer, but are we seeing any type of increase or any issues regarding our hospitals or anything like that? Because I know that that's one of the reasons why the state averaged, was shutting down a lot of things, right? We were, a lot of people were getting admitted into the hospital. So I'm just wondering, are we hearing anything about that in regards to Kaiser or any hospitals being over, overpopulated with clients because of COVID?
No, as far as I'm aware, in just checking the dashboard daily and Councilmember Mendez, I might have different, might have information input on that. But the, it seems to be staying relatively similar considering that we've had programs and facilities open for the last several months also.
Okay. Now, how many people do you?
Sorry, we had one death in Brentwood this week and we average about three positive cases a day. It's not going down.
Oh, it hasn't gone down?
Right, it's been pretty consistent since we entered the orange tier.
Okay. So my next question, how many people do you think we average at the farmer's market on a weekly basis?
Oh, I would say probably in excess of what we'd be expecting for, for the 4th of July parade. So if I had to estimate, I'd say it's between 2,500 and 3,000. But a lot of it's weather dependent and obviously, they're not there for the entire time.
So we're averaging something similar to what we'd be hosting at the parade on a weekly basis on the farmer's market?
Correct, and that is spread out over time. So, you know, so people aren't there for the entire duration of the farmer's market, but, but yeah.
Yeah, I would like to just add though, that it's not, we don't have specific numbers to, I mean, we're just kind of estimating based on observation. So we haven't actually done that count.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, a lot of this stuff, right? It's hard to make every count when it's pretty open to the public kind of a thing. And, you know, people have that access. That's why I'm really, I'm really happy to hear that the city staff is exploring possibility of managing the people that are coming in through color codes or numbers and things like that to be able to hopefully get a more accurate kind of a number there of people that are actually participating. So, okay. And how many times, how many farmer markets, how many times have we had the farmer's market since the pandemic? How long have we been open? Does anybody know?
That is pretty much, I think it was shut down in the very beginning. But after maybe a month or so, it came back. I don't know the specifics, but it came back, I think within a, maybe last June, July, or March or April. So after a couple of months, after everything was shut down, it was one of the first things that came back.
So we've had this open for about how long Bruce? How long do you say, how long do you think? Three months, six months, a year?
The farmer's market's been going on, I'd say for almost a year.
Okay. And I know the numbers are not accurate, but if we're looking at about 2,500 people possibly, right? It could be 2,500, 1,000. And we've been still continuing that, we pretty much have had a lot of people come to downtown. Okay. My next question is, I know in speaking with some of the downtown Brentwood Coalition, the Business Coalition, it sounds like they're pretty supportive of this. Have you heard the same thing Bruce? Or you're not hearing that same thing? Have you guys spoken with the downtown businesses?
We have, they, they're extremely supportive, they're excited to participate. We typically do a downtown business decorating competition with the Downtown Business Coalition and they plan on hosting that this year as well.
Okay, so they're very supportive?
Correct.
Okay. And I know downtown's been pretty packed, some things have gotten a little bit looser. I eat there almost every weekend, so with my family, so I know it's gotten a lot more packed. Okay, for me, I guess, let me see. That's it for right now. I appreciate it, thank you Stacy.
Councilmember Murray.
Um, you know, the one thing with the farmer's market though, is people are going from stand to stand. They're not sitting there right next to the people who are next to them for up to two hours, taking their masks off or even having their masks. We saw with the car parades that were downtown, the streets were packed with people and they didn't wear their masks. I mean, I drove down there one time and I could not believe how many people were out there without their masks on. And the majority of kids who will be coming down there, because we get a lot of kids and families to come down to this. And even if there isn't a kid's parade, families are still going to come down there. And those are the ones that aren't vaccinated right now. Those are the ages that are not vaccinated. And they're going to get their, their kids, or they're maybe even grandparents who come into town for the holiday and we don't know if they're vaccinated. And, and again, I just, I don't know why we can't push this off a year. We've got two parades coming up later this year where it's colder, more people will be vaccinated and, and give our, our community a chance. Even in one of the parades that I did see, they were requiring that if you, if you normally have a float, they're recommending no floats, that maybe have a convertible or two to put signs on and then make sure that your participants are at least five to six feet apart. So, you know, for these dance groups that are out there, you know, that's going to space them out for a very long time in order to get five to six feet apart in, in these dance groups. Because they're usually very tight in going down the street. And even the folkloricos, when they're dancing, they're very pretty close in there. So they would have to spread out as well and move back. It, it just, I, I think we're setting ourselves up to have a spike in our community and, and then shutting businesses down again. And I really hate to see that, especially since we're now getting to the point where we can open up. Thank you.
Did you say something Mayor?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. Two, two questions or points. One was about sporting event spectators. I've read a lot about, and heard a lot about people that are upset that they can't go see sporting events in Brentwood and watch their families participate in sports. And then the other part of this is, did we, did you, I should say, run something like this by the Contra Costa Health Services? I mean, is there a review board that they could give you feedback? And if so, did you do that?
We, we did check in with the Contra Costa County Health Officer, who said that after June 15th, we could move forward with parades. So we did do that. Specifically, your question on the sports, Stacy might have some more information on that.
I do. Unfortunately, on June 15th, this may all change. But the requirement for sports spectators is the same for live performances, which is that we needed to have an established weekly worker testing program. So we were just able to get that going and now it looks like June 15th, things might change a little bit. So as of, I believe, the end of last week, we didn't meet the requirement to have sports spectators. So it looks like that should be changing at some point in the future. But that might not change for youth sports, because it sounds like depending on how the vote goes, Cal OSHA might still extend those requirements for youth sports and schools. So, so we're in a bit of a holding pattern when it comes to sports spectators currently.
Do you see a comparison here? What we're talking about as far as spectators for sports versus spectators for a parade? Or how would you differentiate those?
Um, one of the big reasons that they have different guidelines for these kinds of events is the fact that they have teams coming in from out of town, other counties. So when they're talking about those kind of guidelines, they're talking about not just interleague play, but also bringing in and having tournaments and things like that. So also just because of the way the seating works. But those requirements are only that they wear masks and that our employees have to be tested on a weekly basis. So it was just that weekly worker testing plan that was our holdup for spectators at our sporting events. But now that that's in place and then also the requirement of masking, those, those requirements for outdoor live performances, including parades, are the same as the requirements for sports. That's what they're using as their guidelines for spectators. I hope that answers your question. I know it's a little convoluted.
Thank you.
Councilmember Meyer, were you answering your question?
Um, I, yeah, there's a lot running through my head, but I would finish with that question, thank you.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez.
Um, yes, actually a very good question, Councilmember Meyer. I just attended this last, about two, two weeks ago, I attended a wrestling match here in Brentwood and they had to follow certain guidelines for people to be in there. And of course, you had to wear a mask, you had to be sitting six feet from each other. So I know there's certain events, sporting events that are going on, that as long as they follow the requirements, they're able to have people there. Obviously, they can't have as many people they would like because they wouldn't be able to follow those guidelines when you talk about the seating. So I know that my, me personally, I'm attended that, of course, with the mask on and sat six feet from everybody. But we are opening that up a little by little within our community to be able to have family members, be able to see their kids participate in these sports. Also, in regards to the farmer's market, and I know Councilmember Murray mentioned that a lot of times at the farmer's market, people are not sitting, they're moving. Well, that's true, but it's also not true, because a lot of our restaurants and, and things like that are open at that time. And people are going into those areas of eating and a lot of it's outside now because we, you know, they have the outside eating. So the farmers, because I've been going every other Sunday, one, I go there to get stuff, but I also go to get a haircut. So when I walk you through there, I'm able to see that it's not only open for people to purchase produce and things like that, but there's actual people there eating lunch, breakfast, and sitting, you know, having a drink and things like that. So there's a combination of going on the farmer's market. And please, I hope nobody takes it as a, I'm not trying to bring down the farmer's market, I'm total supporter of the farmer's market. I'm just trying to figure out how much more difference is that than this parade? It's only one day for a certain amount of hours, that our staff feels like they could actually help make it happen and facilitate it and make it as safe as possible. I'm just trying to, you know, it's, you know, it's hard for me to understand why we can do that, but we can have one event for a certain amount of hours with city staff really making an effort to make it as safe as possible. So I just wanted to mention that.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a big leap from a farmer's market to a complete false equivalency. One, people are stationary, shoulder to shoulder. The other one, they're in constant movement. And, I mean, I've been there and I think a lot of people that walk in, they wear their masks, but they are not shoulder to shoulder. I don't stand at the farmer's market, people like right next to me breathing all over me. I'm in motion, I get what I got to get and I leave. So 2,500 people from eight to 12 is very different than having them all there for a parade. And I mean, I was going to, I didn't know you were going to bring that up, but it's a false equivalency. I don't think we should even be comparing the two. To do so is comparing apples and oranges, because one, people are in motion, the other, they will be standing still, shoulder to shoulder.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez, is your hand up from previously or do you have other more to say?
Sorry about that, Mary, I didn't put my hand up, thank you.
Okay, well, if there are no more questions of staff at this time, we will open public comments and I'll turn it to you Margaret.
I received no written public comments that were sent to the city clerk prior to the meeting. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature and I'll call upon your name if provided and unmute you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I currently have two hands raised, I'll start with Vicki Little, followed by Carolina Villaseca.
Hi there. All right, I think I'll just start reading my statement. Dear City of Brentwood City Council, during the months of February and March 2020, as we conducted business day in and day out, by the way, I own Sip and Scoop California located in downtown Brentwood, we kept our eyes on the news reports of Americans being evacuated from cities and countries that were being hit by coronavirus cases. We are concerned, absolutely. We had already heard of one to two cases here in Northern California, but we still stayed open. The CDC had not yet set any direction to Californians at this time. So we worked and we sent our children to school and we had gatherings and we continued to live our lives. We made sure to listen to and respect our leadership on a local, state and federal level. And we verified and followed the CDC's scientific input on this pandemic. On March 8th, the Contra Costa County confirmed that our county had five cases. March 11th, CDC officially declared COVID-19 a pandemic. And on March 13th, President Trump declares COVID-19 a national emergency. As every day passed, we continued to hear the growing number of cases in our county and surrounding counties. But we still worked, we still sent our children to school and we still gathered. We continued to listen to and respect our leadership on a local, state and federal level. And we continued to verify and follow the CDC's scientific input on this pandemic. On March 19th, California issued a statewide stay-at-home order. We became the first state to issue this mandate, requiring all of us to stay home except for an essential job or shop for essential needs. On this day, I still worked, I still sent, I stopped sending my kids to school and we stopped gathering. We continued to listen to and respect our leadership on a local, state and federal level, continued to verify and follow the CDC guidelines. From day one, my family and I and my business and employees have followed the rules, mandates, Health Department recommendations and the requirements. From day one, we respected and we've held up our end of responsibility for humanity's safety and concern. We've listened to and respected our leadership and the CDC's scientific input on this pandemic. We had a COVID scare and even closed our store for nine days during the already deathly slow wintertime for my ice cream shop. It was devastating, but we had to do it. Our store has not opened to the public since March 19th, 2020. We miss our customers. From what I understand, California plans on fully reopening the economy on June 15th. After being ridiculed by some local businesses and by a lot of local community members for following the rules, for being a sheep, I'm ready to continue to trust in my local, state and federal leadership. I want to continue to work, I want to let my children go back to school and I'm ready to gather once again. But why must we decide at this time that we, we will not be following the CDC, the local, state and federal leadership? Why are we not making decisions based on the local level? Or why must we now make decisions on a local level that don't align with our state, federal and CDC guidelines? I want to continue to work, my kids need to be in school, they need to be around people. We need to see that, they need to see that we care about their mental health. We need to be able to gather once again, because if not now, when? How can we show our citizens how to gather if we are too scared to even try to show them an example of safe gathering? I've worked side by side with the City of Brentwood Parks and Rec, the Downtown Coalition, Brentwood Chamber of Commerce, Brentwood Rotary and local schools and neighborhoods during this past year and a half with my business. I consider myself a cautious and rule-following business owner and I trust that all of the above organizations do have our best interests and health in mind when making decisions for our city. They are highly.
The speaker's timer was up, I'll move on to Carolina Villaseca.
Hi, good afternoon, City Council. I just wanted to let you know that first, I appreciate that Karen Rary did all that research. It was wonderful to hear that what the other cities were doing. I think that information is very important. Here's my concern. It is not that the parade can be had, can be, can be, can be, can take place in Brentwood. The concern is that if we're the only city in East Contra Costa that has a parade, I don't know if you remember back to March when we first shut down? Remember what happened with the car parades? It wasn't just Brentwood that attended those car parades. It was Pittsburgh, it was Stockton. We had people from all over, not even in Contra Costa, who drove into Brentwood, down Lone Tree, taking up the entire Rayleigh's parking lot, taking up the Bank of America parking lot across the street, taking up the Winko parking lot. And Lone Tree was a parking lot, because you just could not get through. So my concern is. So my concern is actually, I understand that you can pre-register, but what's to stop somebody from just saying, hey, look, Brentwood's having a parade, let's go? From all the surrounding cities around us, arriving, parking and walking up. Uh, that, that type of crowd management is really concerning, number one. Number two, the abuse that city staff is going to have to take from people who are not going to follow the rules and they know better. And I've seen this, I've seen this in stores, people screaming and yelling. And, you know, why would we put our city staff through this? And our Brentwood Police Department, because eventually they're gonna be the ones that'll have to take care of this. So I think it's important to really think about what are we doing, you know, in terms of what is everybody else doing? And if nobody around us is having a parade, why are we having one? When we know everybody else is going to come here? Uh, the other thing is, uh, the schools are doing their clapouts, uh, drive-by clapouts, which sounds really funny, drive-through clapouts, not drive-by. Um, and the other thing, um, that, could we have like smaller events around town? Maybe at the same time to spread out the population, work with the businesses to see? Maybe they want to have an event over by their side of town, um, that, you know, so like Liberty High School marching band might attend one, at the same time Heritage marching band is attending another. And that way we just kinda split the population that way. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
The next speaker is Marisol Valles. Marisol, go ahead.
Hi, thanks. I just had a quick question as I was listening to everything and I might have missed it, I was late to the call. Um, did, I don't know if there's an explanation of how you would section off the different reservation points? Um, just so that we can make sure that the sidewalks are still ADA compliant. I know with now the awnings and, um, the outdoor seating, that sidewalk is pretty much, um, extremely small and very narrow to walk on. So I didn't see anything in the packet, um, showing the, um, different spots where people would make their reservations and where they would be able to go to the blue section or the white section as was mentioned earlier. So if someone could elaborate on that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no additional hands raised at this, oh, I do have one additional hand. Greg, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, everybody, council and stuff. Um, I know as soon as I'm done, I, my first thing is everybody got to speak except our mayor, Joel. So Joel, I would love to hear what your comments and thoughts are on this, um, since everybody else timed in and haven't said anything yet. Um, but a couple of things, uh, when you talk about the parade route and as many of you know, I've put on numerous events in this town for the last 25 years. And when we used to do the parades, we would go further up First Street and turn on Maple, actually, we used to turn on Pine Street and then go up to Second and come back. And we shortened it because there was not enough people to fill the parade route. So we had shortened it to Maple Street when we did the holiday parade and stuff. Um, so if you want to space out the people, and you're right, that section of Oak Street between First and Second, there is very tight sidewalks and very lot of people. So my suggestion is don't go down Oak Street at all. Just keep going right on First Street until you get to Maple and then you turn right on Maple and then you turn left on Second and then you turn right on Oak. We've done this numerous times in this town and it also allows to keep the parking structure open for parking. Um, but I think it would be easy enough that if you were to like put some marks on this, you take some red chalk and you put, you know, every six feet, you put a bunch of Xs and you say, that's where you don't sit. It would be very easy for staff or the police or the explorers just to walk down the street and say, see the red X that you're standing on or the red X that you're sitting in? You cannot sit there. Um, so, you know, I think spacing out the things is, is, that's how you, that's how you get the people to space out, uh, by making the parade route longer. Um, secondly, I, I, you know, I think this all is a good point. If the state and the county are saying that come June 15th, the restrictions are being lifted, again, why are we making the decision here in town to, I, you know, penalize our residents for doing the right thing? And, and, you know, I, I, I think, from what I'm hearing from people, they're, they were so excited that, you know, the announcement came out last week that we were moving forward and there was just tons of feedback. And then the last couple of days, when hearing that there may not be, everybody's like in uproar. Like, why is our city doing this? And, you know, what did we do wrong that, that they're not allowing us to, to have this parade? Um, so that's, that's my little feedback on there. Although I do have to say, I don't know how you could control, uh, the reservations when you don't have a gated event. When you have a gated event, you can very easily say, hey, it's a circus, a lot of things. But with an open event, there's really no way to control that. People are gonna come from every direction. So I don't know if having people, people pre-register is really gonna help. But by putting, you know, six feet and then you put a bunch of Xs and then six feet of Xs, then it would be very easy to walk up the street and say, you can't sit there. I do this at my church, I'm one of the officers at my church, we've been in the church for the last couple of months and that's what we did, we kind of drove off areas and said, all right, you can't sit there. Anyway, Joel, I'd love to hear what you have to say. Thank you all.
There's no additional hands raised.
Okay, so at this time, we will close public comments.
But before we do, Mayor, can we, can someone please answer Marisol Vias', uh, question about ADA complacency, please?
Yes, I was getting ready to ask staff to do that. Uh, before we get into council discussion, if, uh, someone could, uh, follow after the request of Councilmember Meyer, that would be great. We appreciate it.
Sure, I think I can answer that. So basically, if we have some kind of color coding system, we can, um, make marks on the sidewalk without actually blocking, um, the sidewalk. So I think there's a way that we can do that. Um, so yeah, I think, I think that can be managed as well. So, um, and I know there's a lot of different, um, perspectives here. And I just want to say, you know, we're, we're trying to do our best to open up at the appropriate time. Um, but we want to take, um, obviously we want the public, we want our council to feel, um, like it's the appropriate time. So, you know, we're following the guidance and, and we are, um, being responsible and, and opening up when we think it's appropriate. However, we want to make sure that that appropriate time is the right time for Brentwood. So, um, you know, we are, we want to work with the council and we want to, uh, work under the direction that you provide and, um, make sure that our community is safe. That's the most important thing. So, um, again, we're available to answer any additional clarifying questions as you get into your discussion. So we, we appreciate the, the perspectives and the concerns. Um, I know there's a lot of different perspectives when it comes around reopening and mask and all of these things. People have some really strong opinions. So, um, with that, I, I'm here again and, and the staff is here to help answer questions.
Thank you, Bruce. Uh, before we get into the, this discussion, I did want to address Greg's concern uh, and let, let the community understand, this first part are clarifying questions of staff. Uh, the reason I didn't ask questions then was because my questions had been covered by other council members and, uh, effectively answered. And so now is the time for us to express, uh, our, our opinions and, and have a dialogue as well. So hopefully that's understood. So at this time, I'll call on Councilmember Rary.
Actually, I just wanted to, um, respond to, uh, Vicky Little. She had said, uh, you know, why are we, why are we not following the guidelines? Well, the CDC actually states that they have a, a green safest, um, yellow less safe and least safest is red. And when it came to parades, that was the least safest in the red area of, of activities, outdoor activities to do. And I had said that right at the beginning of my initial speaking. So the CDC actually doesn't really recommend parades, um, especially for those who are not vaccinated. Um, so, a, and that's one of the reasons why I, I've got the position that I do is because the CDC is not recommending it.
And Councilmember Meyer?
Um, a couple of points. The first one is, I would like to address Vicky Little as well and say thank you because I'm sorry you've been called a sheep. Um, I think that's one of the problems of, uh, COVID and, and masking and distancing. Everything has been politicized and polarized and I think it's unfair, um, that you were following the rules and that someone was holding that against you. So thank you for following the rules. Um, in fact, I, when I've gone to your place, it's specifically because you are following the rules. So some of us in the community are specifically trying to patronize businesses that are doing the right thing. So thank you for that. Um, the other thing I want to say is that I, and I'm sorry if this is offensive to anyone on staff. I feel that council has been put in a very bad position here. Um, it bothers me because I've done some research too and found out that other cities in similar positions are waiting for these kinds of proposals to come through Parks and Rec and to come through council before they make a public announcement. So the fact that this is now being discussed in this way, uh, with people getting, you know, upset on both sides with every right to do so, I feel like we didn't follow protocols. Um, council is, you know, we, we've said we're a different council from a year ago, from five years ago. We need to make sure that we're doing this right. We should have reached out to Parks and Rec, we should have gone through council before we made such a big decision and made such a big decision public. So forgive me for being a little upset about this too. I understand both sides. I'm, I feel very caught in the middle right now. I take COVID very, very seriously. Very many, a lot of people in my family caught COVID. Two of them have long-term impact, one very serious. I lost a friend to COVID. So this is not something I'm taking lightly, but I do resent being put in this position because someone on staff did not want to follow what should have been a very clear process to make sure that we were doing something that was done correctly, uh, the same way other cities are doing. I understand Arinda is not 100% yet because council hasn't voted on it, which is the way it should be. It, it should not have happened this way to set everybody up with this high expectation and then to potentially be crashing them down with this and now it's on our shoulders. So I'll, I'll make a decision later, I'm still not there yet, but I just wanted to say that. Thank you for listening.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Um, yeah, Vicky, I think you're still there. We do notice who follows the rules and who doesn't. And you have followed the rules and my heart has always broken for all of the business that you've lost because you follow the rules. And, um, so I want you to know that I appreciate it and, um, you help us be a better city. And, you know, you're a perfect example of an awesome business downtown, so thank you. Um, I'm also a little upset. I heard that, um, certain individuals in town lobbied certain council members to make this happen and certain city staff. And I feel like people did give in to being lobbied. And that is, that's unfortunate because your first thing should have been public health and safety versus who you would make upset and who you would make happy. And I do agree with Councilmember Meyer that this should have come at least through plan, through Park and Rec Commission to understand how they felt as citizens because they probably have a closer pulse to what's going on. The reason I say that is because a lot of parents have contacted me and they said that if having this July 4th parade keeps their kids from going to school at the end of July, I'll never hear the end of it. And their fear is that because there's going to be so many children, it will impact the COVID rate amongst kids. That's one thing. The other thing is that I do volunteer at clinics and the nurses who spend their time volunteering for our public health were appalled when they heard we were having a parade. They give of their time every single weekend and during the week to make sure that we're safe. And they felt like it was, um, like it was irresponsible on behalf of the City of Brentwood to do this. I have to somewhat agree with them, especially seeing the study that we got this morning from a nurse who noted that the contraction rate of COVID among non-vaccinated is way higher than when it was just a general population. Because the people who aren't vaccinated are going out and feeling more comfortable, so they're contracting it at a higher rate. And when I say analytics, that's what I mean. Like what studies have we done in, for our residents to make sure this is gonna be safe? And it doesn't sound like we've done any. So I don't know what we're going to have to do if we're, if, if one of us has to bring it on an agenda item to change what we're doing, but I don't feel safe with a standard parade. I understand it's hot, so maybe we can do a reverse parade in the evening when it's not as hot. So let's find a way to make it work for public health safety and for downtown businesses and for our residents, but I am not comfortable with a traditional parade. So I, for one, would like to see this on an agenda item where we vote on it. Because right now, my understanding is, it's all it is, is a discussion.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez.
Yeah, it's been brought up a couple of times and I just want to ask staff, um, if they know what the difference is, and I think Councilmember Rary had mentioned it, um, between CDC and then, uh, you know, the, the state and also the county guidelines. Why is the county and the state, um, not following the CDC if that's the actual, I mean, guideline? They're, they're thinking totally difference, right? Different. Does anybody know?
Well, it's just the CDC, the CDC is the federal guidelines and, um, the state has its own guidelines and the state is the one who put out, um, information for opening June 15th. And the county is specifically for our county health officer who's giving us the county guidelines. So we have been doing our best to follow and be consistent with all of those guidelines. Um, so that's, that's the plan. That's what we'd like to do.
So from the beginning, Bruce, have we been following the CDC guidelines? Or have we been following the state and county guidelines? Um, because is there a difference? I mean, right now, like Councilmember, um, Rary's saying or, and then what, I mean, I'm just wondering, who have we been following this whole time, I guess?
The plan is to follow all three. Um, Stacy, might you have a little bit more detail in, in that? But yes, we absolutely want to follow and be consistent with all three of those guidelines.
Sure. The CDC comes out with recommendations, but the state and the county are the ones that are issuing enforceable, um, guidelines for what, what different businesses can do. So that's what we've done, um, the whole time is follow whatever's the most restrictive. So up until a few months ago, the county has been much more restrictive than the state. And then once the tier system came out, they sort of lined up in what they were expecting and what the expectations were. So, um, prior to even that June 15th date coming out, what we were looking at doing was in line with the outdoor live performance guidelines for the orange tier, which was a controlled reservation-only assigned seating parade at Liberty High School in their football stadium, um, where seats can be socially distanced. The parade would go through the football field like it does for the end of the homecoming parade and we would do something similar to that. And so that, we had, um, gotten the okay from the Health Department for that as well. Once those guidelines came out for June 15th, it doesn't require those additional steps of checking, um, you know, having a higher capacity if you check vaccination records and things like that. That's when we were able to transition to the idea of having it downtown. So even, even still holding it and having the assigned seating, um, which I know there's been questions about, but very similar to Disneyland, roped-off areas, there's still walkways that are accessible. We can limit that capacity to whatever we feel is appropriate. So certainly people wouldn't be sitting shoulder to shoulder with people. Um, they can socially distance inside those seating areas. So even if the council wanted us to limit it to, you know, 10 families or 10 groups or something per area, which like I said, is about a street block, that would give us the flexibility for that too. So we've been following the state and county guidelines, it's just that they're changing. Um, and so we've been, I mean, we're still even in our facilities disinfecting all of the equipment after it's been used. We're kind of, um.
Stacy, do you, and I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, no, absolutely.
Do you know why the state is not following, um, the CDC guidelines if they're different? Or you just said that the CDC is just a recommendation, that's not that it's the way it needs to be done?
Right, they're not enforceable guidelines. So these are, these are part of actual health orders and the CDC recommendations aren't.
Well, thank you again, Stacy.
Yeah, of course. And just to mention too, there is also the mask mandate. Um, and so that's really what the state's leaning on, on the, after June 15th, on the, beyond the blueprint, is unless you're one of those mega events, then they're following that mask mandate. And one of the things that it mentions in there is even if you're vaccinated, you should wear masks at large events like parades. Um, so, so we felt like that language was supportive of, um, parades in a safe manner, being able to be held since they're listed specifically in the mask mandate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Rary.
I, I also would like to see this come, since we, we can't make a decision tonight unless, unless we do a thumbs up, thumbs down. And then, you know, and then staff takes it from there based on, on what results of the thumbs up, thumbs down are, which I'm okay with doing that too. Um, it's, it's not an actual agenda item, but a thumbs up, thumbs down.
If, if, excuse me, Councilmember Rary, if I may.
Excuse me, councilmember Rary. If I may, just for a second, the way the agenda is written for tonight, it says, receive a verbal update and provide possible direction to staff regarding the holding of a Fourth of July parade. I believe that language is sufficient. If council wishes to provide specific directions tonight and take a vote on it, you may do that regarding the holding of the parade. I don't believe you need to come back at the meeting of June 8th to take that vote. You can if you'd like, but I don't think it's required. I just wanted to provide you with that option.
Okay. Well, yeah, I'd be, instead of putting it off, you know, look at doing a, you know, a vote tonight.
Okay. Having said that, then I'm going to do as requested and chime in for the first. I also with council, well, with all of the council members over different meetings, we, we've all expressed our viewpoints of, of taking COVID extremely seriously. I've lost some very close friends to COVID. I myself was hospitalized for significant amount of time at the very, very beginning before any of the restrictions were put in place and almost had to be ventilated myself. So I, I don't take this lightly. At the same time, there's been a lot of process and progress that has been made. And with the recommendation of our county as well as the CDC, I, I think that we need to take into consideration a couple of things. First of all, the mask mandate will be enforced. Secondly, those that are not comfortable participating in this absolutely have the free will not to participate in this. And I would highly recommend anyone not comfortable participating in this to, to not do so. I, I firmly believe that our, our staff does have the ability to keep this as safe as possible. But, but having said that, mitigating risk is our individual responsibilities. Every one of us face risks that we can mitigate and risks that we can't every single day of our lives. And so I believe that in the process of this, I know that there is a way that we can accomplish this parade in, in a fashion that we can be as safe as possible, at the same time align with the orders, the, that, that we have been given by the county and the recommendations, recommendations of the CDC. A lot of the families, you know, again, like, like council member Meyer spoke earlier, this, this is a very polarizing time for everyone. And, and we, we all see, I spend a great deal of time downtown. We all see people that, like, like Vicki Little, who has been really frankly, a tremendous leader in our community business-wise. She has sacrificed and her family has sacrificed immensely to provide services and, and bring some feeling of normalcy. In, in an abnormal time, you can still go down and do business at her, her store and, and many of the others downtown as well that have followed the rules and, and, and at least maintain some semblance of sanity occasionally to go down there. And, and she has, has led the way as far as if, if, for having heard her say someone called her a sheep, it boggles my mind. If, if you've ever met her, she is the sheep dog, not the sheep. She's, she's the leader. She's the antithesis of someone that's, that's afraid. The, you know, the bravery that she and other businesses have shown through this are, are inspiring. But at the same time, we, we have a community that is very desperate to participate in something. And I know that other, other parades have been mentioned, but this also has a singular significance that other parades don't. This is the Fourth of July. This is the celebration of our freedom from tyranny. This is the celebration that, that we just had yesterday and honoring, not only in honoring by celebrating our liberties, but honoring the lives that, that were given to, to bring these liberties about. And so I, I think this is, has a significance that other parades may not have in that we, we, we do this to honor those that have brought these liberties to us. I think that we can find a way to do it safely. And I know that we're going to probably, and I would recommend that we make the vote tonight instead of putting it off. But, but I, I feel very confident that we can do something for our community. And I've had people that come to me from both sides, some that are desperate to, and very supportive of it, and some that are very critical and concerned about it. And I understand both sides because this has hit home to me and, and again, to, to many of you, most of you as well, if not all of you in council. So in this, in this conversation that we're having, I, I want to, I want us to really keep in mind that we, we are making the decision for our community because that's what they have elected us to do. But we also want them to know that their safety is a priority, their, their well-being is a priority. But we also need to make sure that we provide this, this relief for our downtown and our business community as well, not only downtown, but other businesses. And, and so I'd, I'd love to hear more conversation about this.
Councilmember Meyer.
I honestly, I understand the need to try and push this through. I don't think the parade in its current form is the right fit at this moment. I think we're premature in voting on it. If I had to vote tonight, I would probably say something different than I would after June 15th. We've heard some alternate suggestions about things that could happen that could make a, a different kind of parade that is still a celebration of freedom, but is acknowledging that we're in the middle of a pandemic and we're trying our best to not go back into it. So I would rather wait and make a decision later. I don't want to make a decision tonight. I think that either we could wait till June 15th when we're really sure what the state is going to say, or we could, as an alternate, next council meeting, here are some other alternatives from Parks and Rec about what could come to us that would make us feel more secure about this. I don't, I don't want to get rid of it entirely, Mayor. I really don't. I, I feel that our, our situation with mental health and depression, people feeling isolated is significant. It is also significant health risk. It is also something that we're feeling as a community, but I want to make sure we're doing it right and that we're not going to later on find out we made a huge mistake. To be honest, I, I've gone back and forth tonight based on what people are saying, council members and community members. But what one of our callers said about people coming in from out of town, that's significant. I don't know how we could prevent them from parking way far down the street and just walking in. And I, and I understand that we've got these really great ideas about these sections and I think that's fantastic, but I, I just hesitate to have a lot of faith in them being able to safely be controlled. And, and I don't want our staff to be at risk either. I, I'm just not ready to say I feel completely safe with it. I would like to do something. I truly would. For the sake of everyone in town and our businesses and all of that, I want to do something. I just don't know if we're ready yet to make the call that this is it.
Thank you. Councilmember Mendoza.
Um, I agree with councilor Meyer. I, I don't think this is it. And I think we need to do some more work before we move forward. Regarding the comment about mitigating risk as personal responsibility, well, that's why we were elected. We were elected to take on certain responsibilities for our residents. So yes, a lot of people could choose not to go down there, but we all know how COVID works. Other people are going to catch it. So people might not go down there, but people go down there and then school's going to start. Like I said, a month later, this could turn into a big issue. So I would ask that staff go back and look at another option where people are not shoulder to shoulder on sidewalks, even with the markings. Because, I mean, you all know, see what's happening again in restaurants, in airplanes. It gets violent and I would not want to put any of our staff at risk with a disgruntled person who does not want to put their mask on. I don't think we should be doing that to anyone. And the police department. I think that that's not fair to them either. Right? Like, oh, we're on a parade and you guys deal with it. I, I don't want to see that either. So I think staff should go back and look at a different option, if we have an option at all, and, and come back to us with something else that is way more safe for our residents.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I know that a really difficult, I mean, conversation when it comes to, you know, hosting these type of events in regards to safety and everything. I also like to mention like the mayor has, that, you know, I caught COVID and also my wife and both my sons caught COVID. Our whole family had gotten COVID. So I really seen the impact, knowing it, from hearing about it, but actually at the home, at my own home. I've also seen families and kids, right, that participate in our organization that I work for, you know, have lost family members and things like that. But I know that also, and I think Vicki has said it best was, was, was saying best was, we have followed all the state and, and, and county guidelines. We have followed every one of them. We have followed, I mean, we stayed on track with that and we haven't moved any other way. And right now they're saying after June, I mean, June 15th, things are going to be a little bit, they're going to be able to open. And I think that this, you know, obviously we've been following that this long. I don't see why we wouldn't follow it now. I know that things have gotten better. Obviously we wish that it was 100% of vaccination that people in Brentwood had already, but that's not happened yet. But things have gotten better. I do also trust our staff and our volunteers. And right now I guess our staff in regards to their recommendations of being able to control this, but also at the same time, being able to host the safest event possible that they can do for our residents. So I do trust our staff's vision and what they're looking at and hopefully making this successful. They've done it in the, in the past when it came to the Halloween events and things like that. So once again, I think that, you know, we should trust that. We have already opened up some of our areas, you know, when it comes to sporting events and things like that. Like I've mentioned, I participated in some of those wearing a mask, sitting, sitting six feet, administrators walking around, making sure people are following the rules. And I've seen, you know, where people have a hard time with it, but they follow the rule and, and they've been able to do that. So I think for me, I think that we've done our due diligence and following the guidelines and instructions the state, but also the county has given us where now they're telling us that we can do certain things. And I don't see how we're not trying to look at possibly doing that with the staff overseeing that kind of a project. So yeah, I, I, I feel like it's something we, we can move forward with as long as, like I said, things are being done safely and properly. And I think that our staff can do that.
Seeing no more hands raised for council. And I, I'm hesitant to take a vote which, which may end up eliminating the opportunity to make some adjustments. I think that council members who, who have suggested more time with more opportunity, I, I think the, I, I feel very personally that we, we desperately need to do something and allow the community to participate in something to celebrate Fourth of July. And if it isn't the format that's presented now, then, then I really am very interested in seeing something that is, is possible to be done. Councilmember Rary, your hand's up.
Bruce, this would only be our Fourth, Fourth of July parade, correct?
Uh, yes, I think that sounds right.
So it's not something that we've been doing for a very long time, unlike homecoming? People have been celebrating at their homes for, forever, celebrating Fourth of July, going to the fireworks in Antioch or, or the Concord Pavilion or, or wherever they go to watch fireworks at. So I mean, we all celebrate the Fourth of July in our own way. A parade is, is just one more thing that's going. And I, I, I mean, if staff wants to come back with, with another way, I, I just don't know how we can manage the crowds. You can say it's pre-registered only, but what do you do when families come down there? Sorry, you got to go away. And you got all these screaming, crying kids because they want to watch the parade that's coming down. What about all the people who are waiting, the, the, the part, the parade participants who are waiting that hour ahead of time and they're all standing around talking? And some of these people may have been doing virtual meetings for the last year. This was their first opportunity to be right there next to each other. Or are you going to go back there and say six feet apart? Stay distant. Make sure you have your masks on. Are you going to allow kids up on the, or not just kids, but people up on floats? Or are you going to ask them to stay socially distanced? Even now in the restaurants, I mean, Vice Mayor Rodriguez has said, well, people are sitting during the farmer's market and eating and drinking and, yeah, but those tables are socially distanced right now. They're, they're not sitting on top of each other like they normally would. I mean, you don't, you're not back to back with somebody now. You're got your, your tables socially distanced as mandated by the health department. So I, I think there's a lot of things to still think through and it's not just the crowds, but also the, the participants of the parade who are waiting there for an hour. And, and we know, I mean, people go across the way and hey, John, you know, they, they haven't seen their friend in a while. So they walk across the street and they start talking with them. And it happens all the time because you got an hour to, to spare while you're waiting for the parade to start. So I, I don't know that this has been, I mean, it's been thought through, but I don't know that it's been thoroughly thought through. And there are great safety measures in there, but I, I don't know how we're going to limit the people who are just going to show up, the out of town people are just going to show up. The, the someone whose plans changed at the last minute and said, hey, there's a parade downtown. Why don't you come with us? So they go with their, their friends to go to that. It, I, I, I think we, we really need to think through this. Or maybe even do like, uh, Plowton Hill is doing. They're bringing the parade out to the neighborhoods. They're doing a, a, a smaller parade with a band on a truck and they're going through the neighborhood and, and celebrating Fourth of July that way rather than bringing a mass of people downtown to, to, to possibly spike our community with another COVID outbreak. And then what do we do when, when those businesses downtown have to close again? I, I just, I, I think we really need to think through this more and I, yeah, bring it back at the next meeting with staff considering a, a lot of different options.
Okay. So it sounds like the majority of council would like to bring this back or staff to relook at some other possibilities. Is there anyone that does not feel that way? If, if you feel, let's do a thumbs up if you, if you're for it. I'm, I'm for having staff look at it, bring back.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I appreciate the thumbs up and I saw five of them, but because you're meeting virtually, the Brown Act still requires roll call votes. So I'm sorry for that. But I just want to make sure that we're, we're in, in line with that. So if, if I could ask someone just make a motion to have this matter be brought back to council at a future meeting to, to have more.
I'll just do it. I'd like to make a motion that we bring this item back to our next council meeting for potential future votes. And in the meantime, look at other options. We're making this more, a more safe event for the community. Look at other cities that they're doing. And I think that's enough.
And a first and a second. Councilmember Mendoza.
Well, I second. But can I ask a question? I'm, I'm sorry. So are we?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Mendoza, your sound is off. We can't hear you. Is it just me or?
And, and extending the route, maybe going down to Maple and sit down because with all of this seating that's out there, all, you know, it, it's going to be harder for people to sit along Oak Street. Maybe take it all the way down past the vet center and turn down Maple and then come back down Second Street. That, that's probably a better thing. It's a longer route. You can spread people out. I, I think I'd be more comfortable with that than, than the way it, it sits right now.
But that wasn't part of the motion. That was just options for staff to consider, correct? Councilmember Rary? All right.
Sorry, I, I got disconnected. But so are we putting everything on hold right now? Right? Like any receiving applications, anyone who applied, we're telling them to hold off? Don't move forward because we're not sure what's happening? I don't want people to go spend money and then like, oh, I spent all this money on a float or I spent like, what is, what do we do right now? Since we're not sure what we're going to do?
Bruce, could you answer that?
Yes, we, we would put that on hold and we would bring it back. And I think what I'm hearing is look at options, one possibly extending the. what I'm hearing is, um, look at options. One, possibly extending the parade route so we can really, uh, spread people out. Um, I also, I think we, another option would be this, um, idea of having the parade inside the football stadium where we can control how many people come in. But, um, if that's not an option, then, then we don't need to bring that one back. So I don't know if you can give, otherwise we can bring those two different options for consideration if, um, the council would like.
I see Chris Sparrow has the hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to interject that if we do put, um, everything on hold, which we certainly can, we are kind of up against it on the timeline. So if we are not looking for people to participate, um, even as a reverse parade, if we're not looking for people to have those, um, you know, floats that are in place, um, by the time that we come back to you. I mean, we're already really late to this game. Um, no one's fault other than the changing guidelines. Um, but I just don't know that if we don't have approval to move forward in any capacity until the next meeting, I, I don't want to make the commitment that we'd even be able to pull it off. Um, so I just want to put that out there so that nobody is surprised by that outcome if that's the case. I just want us all to be on the same page that obviously staff is going to do everything that we can to pull off whenever we can. But if we are, if we're pulling the brakes like completely out of halt today and we are not allowed to start in any capacity until the next meeting, it's going to really limit the options because we will just be out of days to make it happen. So I just, I just wanted to be transparent and, and say that.
Chris, would it be beneficial, uh, to not take money potentially from those that would like to participate, but, uh, to maybe have, have a list of those, making them aware of what the possibility may be, but, but judging, gauging interest, uh, from, from the list that may have already been started?
I'm not, yeah, I'm not concerned from a, like a budgetary or a finance perspective or money changing hands. I just think if we are going to change the model, um, it's actually really hard to get people to, not for the attendees to come to the reverse parade, but to get organizations to agree to be on the street to do it is actually very hard. And at several points, the chamber almost had to cancel that event because we couldn't find enough people who want to do that. Um, so if we are moving in that direction, it would be really helpful for council to just make that decision now at least, because we have to start like feet on the ground like tomorrow recruiting people to do that. Um, so I, I get it. I'm not trying to push you guys to be somewhere that where you're not. That's not my intent by saying this. I just want to have transparency that it takes a lot of work to, to make this happen. And if we don't start in one way or another, I just don't want anyone to be disappointed if we can't pull it off.
Council member Mendoza, you had raised your hand, did you?
Uh, yeah, I think it's, I mean, it's hard for you all and staff and I understand that, but it's hard for us too. And I think that the hard thing for me is that I have been sending emails with my concerns and I don't know if staff has gotten that feedback. But this is not a new sentiment that I had today. This is a sentiment that I've been relaying to our city manager. So I'm sorry that you're stuck between this hard, you know, rock and a hard place. I don't want to put you there and I apologize for that a hundred percent. Um, but I mean, I, I just don't know what else to do. Because I, yeah, I mean, it's, I would like to do a little bit more analytics about what the risk is, you know, with that study that just came out about, you know, people, unvaccinated people and the rate of con- contracting it. And then this is putting them all in one place. I just, I don't, I just need more time to understand what would be the ramifications of doing it. But I, I mean, I would lean towards a reverse parade. I don't know how everyone else feels. Where people stay in their cars, they don't get out of their cars. And if the sun is a problem, can we move it to the evening? I don't know if that works for everyone.
Okay. Well, we do have a motion and one that is seconded on the floor, uh, regarding moving it, uh, to, uh, a future council m- meeting. Um, yes, council member Meyer.
If we have consensus, a majority consensus that a reverse parade would satisfy if we did it at night, um, can we suggest that? I, I mean, can I make a motion on that and remove the other to see if it has consensus and that way the plans can still continue?
Council member Meyer, I believe you could withdraw your motion if the second or, and assuming the second agrees with that, and then another motion could be made.
What do you say, seconder?
I'm not thinking well tonight. This is a lot. Um, yeah, I mean, if we could, if keeping people in their cars and not being on the streets altogether, I think would be a good option. Um, I'd feel better about that for sure.
Okay. So, uh, council member Meyer, did you withdraw your motion? And council member Mendoza, did you also withdraw your second?
Yeah.
Uh, Mayor, I have a question too. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, before, before, uh, Vice Mayor Rodriguez speaks, yes, I can withdraw that so that we can reconsider this.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Rodriguez.
Now, going back to what staff said, and I think, and please, if I'm wrong, somebody correct me, but Stacy had mentioned that doing a reverse parade, um, is a lot more complicated, but a lot, lot more, yeah, a lot more difficult for staff and, and more complicated. Am I correct in that? Or, I mean, Stacy, or, or does that matter?
Yeah, yeah. The reverse parade has a lot more, um, intricacies as far as how many cars we can allow through at one time. It makes the event significantly longer. Um, so that's one of the areas that we were running into challenges with for Hometown Halloween as well as the holiday parade that ended up being canceled, uh, because it does require those parade participants to stay for, for much, much longer. Um, having one in the evening, heat's probably still going to be an issue. Even if we start at four, we're still, we're still pretty warm. So, um, so I mean, it just sort of depends on the decision you guys choose to make. But as Chris mentioned, it's significantly harder to get, um, participants to have a float or a performance in a reverse parade. Um, so there is that likelihood that, that we may not get enough to make it worthwhile to, to do one. I mean, we'll certainly try.
All right. Thank you.
You're on mute, but I think you said Meyer. Yes?
I did. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so we're kind of back to square one again because in order to try and, uh, allow for more time, we were going to go one direction, but allowing for more time makes it more complicated. So we are, we are trying to work with staff on this. We, I mean, at least I can say I would really, really like for something to happen. I'm just not there yet. So, um, uh, how about we learn more about what Pleasant Hill is doing? Is there something that we can, um, adopt from what they're doing?
Sure. So the, I can-
Talking about that?
Yeah. So the event that they're doing in Pleasant Hill, because it's such a small community and I've spoken to their staff, um, they're just taking their small parade and driving it through the handful of neighborhoods that exist in Pleasant Hill. Um, so I don't know the feasibility of us being able to do here with, you know, Brentwood covers a lot more space than Pleasant Hill does, um, and how that works as far as, as street closures go. For a parade downtown, we only have to do a limited number of street closures here. Having to move that throughout, that's, that would be something we'd have to run past the police department and, um, and public work to see if that's something we could even do, just because it's so much more area to cover.
Council member Meyer, are you finished with your question?
I'm just, there's just mice running in circles in little, uh, hamster wheels, I should say, in my head right now. I've done a lot of event planning myself, but I'm trying to figure out how this can work. Uh, but now I-
Certainly extend that parade route, um, as council member Rary mentioned, and still do those seating areas and maybe limit them even further if that's something that you're comfortable with, with is limiting that area to 10 families or 15 families or something that allows for distancing within those seating areas. Um, and then, you know, if people come in who aren't pre-registered, if we have space available in the seating areas by extending that parade route, accommodating them. Um, but then unfortunately having to turn them away like we did with Hometown Halloween with just the understanding that that pre-registration is required for contact tracing, if that's something that makes the council feel more confident, um, in us getting that information ahead of time. We can register people on the spot using phones or iPads or, you know, anything like that. So, so that is another option. If we, if we do extend and go all the way down and not use Oak Street, um, we could accommodate more people if, if, you know, if that was an option you wanted to look at.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez, uh, Vice Mayor Rodriguez.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor. I didn't put my hand down. Apologize.
Council member Rary.
Yeah, I'd be more comfortable going down, um, I, I do hope going down, all the way down to Maple and turning, um, that rather than going down Oak Street. Um, if we could, you know, section it off, no standing between these lines, um, with a, you know, a sign on the sidewalk there, no stand between these lines. Um, if we, I, I, I'd have a problem with the explorers. I, I, I know they're trained, but trying to tell families that they can't be there is an adult thing to do, not a, not, not a teenager.
Sure. Or not at all. We have them work the event every year anyways, just to help with crowd control and things like that. But our idea for those seating areas is we'd have staff that would be there or adult volunteers that would be responsible for that one section, not the explorers.
Yeah. I, so yeah, I would be, I would be more comfortable with that. I, and we'd need somebody also down through the parade, um, participants, um, to make sure that, that we're staying the socially distance. Cause it, I know it's an hour and, and we're trying to burn time. So we do walk around and talk to people. I know, I, I do it. So, um, I, I would be more comfortable with that. Uh, would we be able, what, what time of the day are you looking at doing it again?
We had a start time of nine thirty because we don't have that children's parade, but we could also limit the check-in time. Um, typically we start that about an hour and a half, two hours before the parade begins. So we could certainly limit that, stagger the times that groups are checking in. That way there's not as much downtime for the groups that are waiting. Um, we do have that area staffed and we have volunteers down there also. Um, but we could shorten that time so they're not waiting around for as long because those, the children do get antsy and, and, you know, while they're waiting. So that's-
In, in creating these zones, would you be telling the people, come check in at this zone? And so you don't have people checking in down at Birch-
Correct.
-a, a place over there by City Hall?
Correct. So the idea is very, very similar to what they do at Disneyland for their show passes. So they would get specific directions emailed to them about where their group checks in at. And so they would check in with that staff in that one area. Um, so there would be, you know, they'd be checking in, in that seating area along the entire parade route, not at one location.
Will all the, um, parade participants need to wear masks?
Um, we're waiting on guidance from the county, but our preference would be there are some different rules for performing. So it could be that they have to, you know, for the, for the dance groups or, or things like that. They're already wearing them for competitions. Um, so the only thing I could see is if anyone was singing as a part of their performance, they might remove the mask for that, uh, performance and then put it back on. Um, but we can certainly require that the parade participants wear masks the entire time unless they're actively, um, you know, singing or, or performing something like that.
Well, I, I know my, my granddaughter's in dance and, and they actually don't wear a mask in performance. Um, I, and maybe that's the county she lives in, but, uh, she's down in, in Anaheim, in Orange County. So, um-
Yeah. It's sort of hit or miss here. Some of them do and some of them don't. So, um, but that certainly can be a requirement that we make for the performers.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Yeah. I, I'd be more comfortable with, with the extended route and, and the specific signage between, no standing between these lines and, and pre-registration or requirement. Um, all right.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez.
Yeah. Has, um, anybody thought of talking to, uh, the downtown, uh, Brentwood Coalition to maybe participate, be the volunteers since they're going to be having, you know, a lot of people in front of their, their stores or their restaurants and things like that. And we, have you guys collaborated with the downtown Brentwood Coalition to maybe get them to volunteer?
Um, not for volunteering. So typically the either their business is open or it's not. So if their business is open, they're there and they're running the business. And if they're closed, they're off doing something else for the day. Um, but between BNC and volunteers that we've had from other events, we have a pretty good pool of volunteers in addition to our full-time staff and part-time staff.
Yeah, maybe, maybe not all, maybe not all.
Pete Jacobi here.
Okay. Maybe not all the, um, you know, participants, maybe just the board of the, uh, downtown Brentwood Coalition would be good to, just to have them because they know the area, they know the people that own the business. Maybe you could get some of them to volunteer as, you know, the board members themselves, not all the businesses, but staff, the board members. Something to look out to.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah. I, I'm still concerned about everyone from the area. Like even if we extend it, how do we keep people from parking, coming down the street and filling it up? Like, I just, I, I don't know how we're going to control that. Like Carolina said, I mean, those car shows that they do, I mean, it's, it's a lot. So I, I just, I don't know. I'm still leaning towards having you guys do some work on how many people you think we're going to get. Like all of that good stuff, talk, you know, figuring out how many people come down for the car shows because I think it'll probably be equivalent. How will you manage that? And then come back the next meeting and go, this is the plan. This is how we're going to do it. This is how we're going to control it. And then with the plan in place, we can say yea or nay. But, um, I would feel, I would feel uncomfortable tonight saying yea or nay without even seeing a plan.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez, you still have your hand up.
Sorry about that, Mayor. Bad habit. She-
Okay. Um, you know, council member Rary did, um, bring up the fact that, uh, Mr. Jacobi, uh, might be here. Uh, he is the director of the Downtown Business Coalition. I believe that's the title. Um, it, it would be beneficial to have him-
President.
President. President, uh, PJ. Um, and so if, if he's here and willing to give some input in this discussion before we make a vote, that would, if it's okay with council, I'd, I'd like to hear what he might have to offer.
I'll go ahead and unmute him.
I'm okay with that, ma'am.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, sorry about that. I have some technical issues with the phone. Uh, yes, and thank you for allowing me to speak for a minute. And I just wanted to touch on it that, you know, the, the downtown Brentwood Coalition has been putting on, um, large scale events for several years. And, uh, I, I agree that there's a lot of concerns there from all, from both sides. Um, very, very smart. Um, but you know, with, with, I like the recommendations of, of searching for alternate ways that appease to both sides, um, that are safe, that make our city continue to look good. Um, it's where, we're walking a very thin line because, you know, with structure, structure's good. And that's what the downtown Brentwood Coalition has always strived for with putting on big events, which are for the betterment of our downtown. Um, however, during this pandemic, we've really seen the, uh, restlessness, I want to say, of, of the community from being locked down, um, just tired of it, trying, starting to try to do their own thing. And it's been very beneficial for the businesses for, it's been great for the, for the people. Um, and I'd like to offer our assistance as our board, um, to collaborate with ideas that can appease to everyone here, um, and do something good to celebrate our independence. Like, uh, Mayor Bryant said, I think it's very significant. So, um, I will speak with our board and if you guys have any questions and want to meet this week, we absolutely can and start brainstorming.
Thank you very much for your input. We greatly appreciate everything, uh, that you and the Brentwood Co- downtown Brentwood Coalition do for our community.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Um, so do we have a motion, uh, to move this item forward?
Well, based on what Pete just said, it sounds like he wants to explore options as well. So maybe, um, make the motion to, for Park and Rec and, um, the Brentwood Neighborhood Coalition to work together to find an option that will be safe for our community where everyone can enjoy the Fourth of July and come back the next meeting. And then we'll look at the logistics and then we can vote on that.
So I would second, um, that, which is kind of, I was going to say something similar based on an earlier.
In, in the downtown business coalition, not the Brentwood Neighborhood Coalition.
Yeah. Yes. Sorry.
I would second that. If it ends up not being a reverse parade because it's too much work, then there, you know, Bruce talked about it. know, Bruce talked about additional safety measures. Maybe there's some we haven't heard yet. Maybe Pete Jackaway and the, and the downtown business coalition have other thoughts. So I'm seconding, as long as you aren't taking that back, Councilmember Mendoza.
Do we have a first and a second? Could we get a roll?
But really quick, Mayor, we got to remember that our, real quick, Mayor, I'm sorry. We have to remember what our staff said, though. They need to be able to get started tomorrow, at least, uh, portions of it. So I, I just want to make sure that we remember that because if not, we're not going to be able to make the timeline of this event if we continue, you know, if we have, I'm okay with, um, you know, the city of Brentwood, our, our staff and then also the Brentwood, uh, downtown Brentwood Coalition to meet and work out those, but our staff needs to know something specific in regards to being able to move forward starting tomorrow. And I'm sorry, Mayor, I don't remember exactly what that was. I know that Chris had mentioned that, that they needed to know certain things so they could at least move forward on that. Do we know what that is?
For us, the, the major factor is being able to still recruit participants. So even if we're able to let them know that the, the circumstances in which we're holding the parade might change, whether that means it's a reverse parade or, or those things change, but for us, the biggest, um, issue would be holding up the recruitment of parade participants because it is open already and if we lose a week, it's likely we won't get enough participants to hold the event.
How many do you have?
Um, I want to say we have seven now, um, but it's, you know, we just, we just opened it a few days ago and it was a holiday weekend, so we usually have right around forty. We struggled to get, um, participants for Hometown Halloween and I think we wound up with only, with under twenty.
Well, if, if it is okay with council, uh, the Christmas parade or the holiday parade had, had the same issue, but, uh, I, I think that, um, the community understanding, we're making every effort to make this happen, uh, and I think with this offense, the applicants would understand also if, uh, if we're not able to, I, I'm okay with continuing with the applicant process with the understanding with, to them, that, uh, it may, it may be an issue that, that doesn't happen if we can't find a resolution.
Can I say, I agree with that. I think, um, I don't, maybe we don't even say parade, we say event, just for the sake of clarification, since it seems to be up in the air right now. I would say we go through with accepting applications and moving forward with planning ideas because whether the event happens or it's just presented, the ideas still have to be, uh, you know, put together and, and hashed out. So I, I think moving forward with saying yes, you can still work with, uh, applicants and yes, these ideas are still developing and, and then if it takes a very long time at our council meeting on, on the eighth, um, to get these things moving, then that's what we do, because we're committed to doing something.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
With staff, is that, would, would that work as well as possible under the circumstances for you?
Yeah, um, Stacy's going to talk, but I just want to jump into, um, yeah, so I think what we'll try to do is we'll turn something around really quick and get it on the June eighth council meeting for consideration. Um, in the meantime, we will really look at these options so we can bring back some, uh, further information for you. And, uh, I just want to say there were some comments made tonight. Um, you know, as the Parks and Rec Director, I take responsibility for making sure that our council is informed and has the information ahead of time. So, um, you know, I take responsibility for that. My staff has done an outstanding job of, of prepping for these, pivoting different times in response to all of the COVID guidance over the last six months. So, um, I give them a lot of credit for being able to continue to, um, work through all these different scenarios. But, um, I do understand the place that puts the council in right now. And, um, you know, that, as the director, that's on me, so, um, I take accountability for that. But, um, staff has done an outstanding job and we'll, we'll bring this information back. So hopefully you can make a real good, informed decision and, um, we can find a, a way that makes the best sense for Brentwood. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Bruce.
I think we have a motion on the table and a second.
We, we do. Uh, Stacy, did you have anything further?
Oh, I was just going to mention, I appreciate that, Bruce, um, that we can, um, allow, we can let the individuals that are registered for parade, for the parade now know that the details are in flux, it could be an event, um, the application and everything that's out already says parade, um, but we can make sure that we change the programming in the description, um, that says that the details of the event might change if that, if that's okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. So we do have a first and a second. Uh, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Bryant?
Aye.
Motion carries, five oh.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. I believe we're about to adjourn to closed session and I just wanted to make an announcement for those of the members of the public that are listening to this portion of your meeting. Uh, the council meeting, uh, that's been web-streamed will, will stop and we're, the staff will be shifting over to the Planning Commission meeting, which has been delayed because this one has been occurring. So there's going to be a slight delay for the Planning Commission to start, um, and , uh, if they can just stay tuned on the city's website, they'll be able to pull that up or through the Zoom link that is provided with the, uh, Planning Commission agenda. So when we go off here, the Zoom feed will, 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 will still be on for those participants of staff, uh, but for the public, the, the public part of this will be over. Uh, the council, uh, will be, if there's any announcements after closed session, they'll be, be made via Zoom. They'll also be placed on the agenda for the eighth, so everyone will hear what, uh, what announcements, if any, were made. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, um, I'll consider a motion to adjourn to closed session.
So moved. Second.
Do we have a first and a second for roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Bryant?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We are adjourned to closed session.